Committee on Public Safety Subcommittee becomes order. We read the open meeting law language pursuant to an open meeting law. Any person may make a video or audio video recording this meeting or may transit the meeting through any medium.
Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. We call a roll, please.
Counselor Dion?
Here.
Counselor Washington?
Here.
Chair Kelly?
Here.
Okay, so first item, now item number one is citizens' input. Is anyone signed for citizens' input? Okay. To number two, we have the minutes from our last meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So voted. Next, we have to list an item from the table. It's a discussion regarding traffic noise and air pollution by Northeast Alternatives. So this has been around-
Motion, motion to lift from the table?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So I'll just start that it's been around for a while. And that reason, that reason is, I would think, that we wanted to make sure things are, keep it on the books, make sure things are alleviated there. So I would like to call, let's see, Mr. Akins down, please, and Chief Goven. So the neighbors were invited that were here last time. There was quite a few that were here. So this committee is hoping that, since there's more competition, that there's been a somewhat of, you know, a benefit or alleviation to the traffic problem. Chief, would you like to start?
The calls to that area have been significantly decreased. I think you're spot on with the addition of competition to that business. The competition to that business certainly has decreased the number of calls going to that area.
Mr. Akins?
I would just- Wow, something weird going on there. I would just echo that with regard to the mayor's office, similar reduction in calls and concerns over the last eighteen months. Because I know this is what, twenty-one, twenty-two? Twenty-one.
Twenty-one, yes.
So there's been a lot of change in the industry overall since the craziness of those early days.
Okay. Are any neighbors here that actually were getting aggrieved by this? Any neighbors present? Because they were invited, I'm just asking. I guess not. So I would entertain a motion. Not necessary, I would think. Unless you want to.
Do you want some down to speak?
I could provide brief update.
Sounds good.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, that's true.
But may I be seated?
State your name and address, please.
Jared Goslin. I'm here on behalf of Northeast Alternatives.
Hi, Mr. Goslin. Haven't seen you in some time.
I'm Director of Security. We've met here in the past. You guys are right, we are down thirty percent since 2021 in foot traffic. Staying true to some of the conversations we had collectively here, I'm still in contact with our neighbors. Our fence was actually tagged Monday night, and one of the neighbors sent me a call this morning, "Hey Jared, can you get this fixed?" So power wash and brake cleaner and the pot leaf that was, you know, spray painted on one of our fences is gone as of this morning. The only issue I think we're down to in the community surrounds waste management collection. The city council tried to support by sending formal letter to waste management asking that they abide by the ordinance. They've since still continue to give us some pushback, and it's happening, you know, it's happened about three times in the last six months. I do get a complaint from the neighbor who suffers, you know, that trash collection early morning, six forty-five or so. I can tell you we've done a little bit of due diligence regarding the matter. We are contractually bound to waste management until October of this year, and we do intend to switch trash collection services in October. We already have quotes in that lined up, so that will be our permanent solution. We've been assured by a new trash collection service that they'll be able to abide by the city ordinance, and that's our hope to finally solve what I would like to call the last open-ended matter that I think the community is still facing.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, I would suggest to you that's on you.
Correct.
It's not on the council. You have a contract with your existing vendor.
Exactly, yeah.
So, I mean, I don't, I don't think it's within the purview of the council to-
No, just in case if any of those complaints from the community were still actively being voiced, although they seem to be channeled directly through me, I just wanted to let everyone know here that we hear the complaint, we're acting on it, give everyone a fair update, contractually bound for October, and we will not be renewing that contract.
Counselor Dion?
Yeah, I guess my only comment on that is where they're violating ordinance, the city has the ability to either give them a, well, I would say at the minimum, a warning first and then a citation or some type of reprimand. I mean, an ordinance is an ordinance. If they're violating our laws, then we have the ability to step in.
Yeah, I think Mr. Goslin's hit it on the head, which is they're going to him for us to see if they can rectify the matter. I ran our data base search from May thirtieth of twenty-two through May thirtieth this year, and we've only gotten three calls from minutes traffic or just citizens needs info type of information, but nothing specific to traffic jams, all the other issues that we've had, nothing mentioning any trash pickup or noise issue.
Yeah, also staying true to some of our conversations of the past, we did discuss Northeast Alternatives expansion and how that is also going to contribute to reducing the customer foot traffic in that area, and I'm pleased to share that we've stood true to that. We are looking to open our second retail location in Seacock, Massachusetts approximately forty-five days from now. So that's also going to contribute to our patrons being spread throughout different locations and reducing foot traffic there. So that is also still coming to fruition and is in our very near future. Building's done, buttoned up, just awaiting CCC final licensure.
Any other questions?
No, I think the only other thing, I would make a motion for leave to withdraw, seeing that things have gone well for the last two years and, you know, as you said, you've held true to your promises, and it seems to be going smoothly. So I would make that motion.
Thank you.
Motion made, leave to withdraw. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so voted. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Goslin. Thank you for your time.
Okay, number four, resolution convened with Director of Traffic and Police Chief to discuss large commercial vehicles traveling Wilson Road. This was hold for discussion as well, so I believe it'd be emotional, no, it wasn't on the table, so. So we'll just have, Ms. Traffic, have Laura come down, and the chief's here. If you'd like to say stuff for now, if not? I hope you stay at the meeting, okay?
I will stay.
Thank you. So this is a resolution, I believe, by Counselor Ferrera. So it's been on the books since 2021, March of 2021, and just like an update on this to see-
To be honest with you, there's nothing that's come across my table. Once again, we did the research, we, in the complete pantheon of the entire Wilson Road area, we only have twenty-five calls to that area. And throughout the year, I think we just had an accident on the twenty-fourth with a tractor trailer hitting a light post. That accident report has not been completed, but we'll receive the city ordinance violation.
Okay. Would anyone from the public like to speak? Come on down, please. Oh, awesome, okay. Correction, it was Chris Peckham's resolution.
Hi, Colleen Cooper, four thirty-two Wilson Road. I was one of the first complainer back in twenty twenty-one since I was working at home, and I saw the tractor trailers up and down the street. Now I'm back at work, but I still see the tractor trailer trucks, and the majority of them are going to ice cube storage, raw seafood, and now Liberty Utilities is up and down with their dump trucks and backhoes day and night. There were two traffic poles within the last three weeks that were knocked down by this, and the state had to replace. I don't know if you got, I know you got one call, but there was two within the last week.
Maybe it's two, I don't know if the state police took the other one, maybe.
Possibly.
Two, two in the last year?
In the last three weeks. They take them down and they run up to Industrial Park.
State replaces them.
Yeah.
So, I mean, what we're, we'll do is we'll monitor and make sure that I get a message out to Mr. Hessler of the Industrial Park that we'll be monitoring giving out city ordinance violations for any trucks coming that way.
Yeah, I know there's a sign on Sykes Road to go towards Wilson Road. The trucks are still coming. They're still coming. When the council called me about this meeting, I said to, on the person on the phone, I said, "There's a yellow truck going right down the street and doing about forty miles an hour."
And what's your location in terms of-
I'm right on the corner of Wilson Road and Route twenty-four.
Okay.
Right on the corner.
Okay. Ms. Ferrera, you have to speak to them?
I, I mean, I still receive calls. I'm not saying I receive as many as I used to in the past, but the traffic department still gets it. We have met with Carl Hessler, and he has reached out to all the companies with a letter letting them know to use twenty-four Innovation Way. The state put a huge sign on twenty-four heading south to use Innovation Way, and that sign's still up. We put signs throughout Commerce, Sykes-
I see, and Route twenty-four.
Directions to get back onto Innovation Way. So those are still up. We did have a camera at the intersection of Wilson Road and Highland Avenue where it took pictures or it recorded all the, a lot of them too are from, well, I don't even know if it's Allied Waste now, but a lot of the trash trucks tend to use that Wilson Road, and they really should be using Airport Road. So I know they've reached out to them as well.
Easy disposable, doesn't it?
Yeah, so, yeah, so they tend to, I just think that it's just a straight road, so, but the signs are all up, we do the best that we can, so. I know someone just requested a solar powered stop sign at Sykes and Wilson Road, so we'll be putting that up in a couple of days as well.
There is another person on the lower end of Wilson Road. I don't remember her last name, Jane, she's like, she, right from North Main Street, four or five houses up on the left-hand side. She's been claiming, I mean, complaining for years because if you're going up Wilson Road, there's a bunch of potholes, and as the trucks are going up Wilson Road, it's shaking her house. And when they're going up North Main, excuse me, up Wilson Road, and they get that green light, they're doing forty, fifty miles an hour, plowing through. They don't stop. I'm surprised no one's really got hurt.
Well, it means a lot to this committee that you're here. You probably had a busy day.
Yeah.
So-
I don't see it as much now because I'm at work. I'm not working from home, but when I was, during the pandemic, it was-
It was bad, it was bad.
It was awful.
Yeah, it slowed down a little bit, but they're still using it, you know.
Counselor Washington?
Just a question, has anyone cited? Has anyone been cited? Any of the trucks been cited? Like, who gets cited? So is like the trucking companies or the truck driver gets cited? Has anyone been cited since two thousand and one?
Well, I don't know since two thousand and one. I know in the last year, only one.
Only one's been cited?
But I mean, I think it's clear that it's on the table. It seems like it's an enforcement issue, and we'll take appropriate steps.
Thanks. Counselor?
Yeah, maybe the city administrator can come back because if easy disposal is one of the people causing the issue, I believe he possibly could have a conversation with them.
It's about two thirty.
Seeing the contractors-
And it's around two thirty, it's around two thirty.
Seeing the contractors, the contractors with the city. Here.
Thanks, Laura.
She isn't only nice, she's efficient, too.
Thank you.
So this neighbor on Wilson Road was telling us that one of the problems on Wilson Road is easy disposal, using Wilson Road, and they shouldn't be. So I thought we would invite you, seeing you might have a direct line, and be able to speak with them and nip that in the bud.
Absolutely.
And that would be greatly appreciated by everyone.
I think what I would probably do to start, just from a chain of command standpoint, is talk to Charlie Dennehy and Joe Kennedy in our solid waste and reinforcement. They have a good relationship with those people, know them well, and there's some folks that we work with closely routinely that could make, make sure that that doesn't happen. And then if it needs escalation, I'll jump in.
And I would also think, I mean, obviously in this part of the country, we can't avoid potholes. It is what it is, but I'm sure these heavy vehicles driving up and down Wilson Road also exasperate that situation, and so they're also damaging our roads as well, which is another issue and a problem with that yield.
I will address that.
So my suggestion would be to table this, which seems like it's still an issue, and we'll revisit it.
Thank you.
And you have our phone numbers if you need to call us?
Yep.
You have our email addresses all online, so, and your name is again?
Colleen Cooper.
Okay, I assume you're Colleen.
Sir, just might ask, when you're having these issues, have you been calling the police department?
I have not been calling the police department, no.
Okay, all right, I was just trying to-
I started with the mayor.
Hearing all these complaints and then saying, I've done the research, and I know we've only got twenty-five calls there, and there's only one of them that has to do with traffic. So, okay, I would appreciate it, though, if you do have these issues, please call us, because that's how we're going to monitor, you know, what the issues are and what time that we have this issue, and we'll take care of it.
Sure.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper.
Okay.
Motion to table?
Second.
Motion to table made and second, all in favor?
Aye.
So voted. Thank you.
Thank you.
The orange jacket and the green shirt is fabulous.
I love your color, always love your colors.
Will you return the shirt? I don't think you have it. Sure?
So item number five, resolution to discussion regarding ways to improve resident safety regarding speeding in the north end, east, I'm sorry, northeastern avenue and Bedford Street area.
Motion to lift from the table?
Motion to lift from table made?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I think I would ask Mistake to come back down, sorry, sir. And I know Mr. Corey is here, I'd ask him to come down if he would like. Uh, Ms. Mello?
Thank you, sit down, I'll sit at my desk.
I can grab one more. Can I grab one more? Just around the table.
No, no, it's all right. I'll come back, I'm not worried.
I don't think you can do that, Michelle.
Well, I've sat, we've sat here before. Oh, geez, that's right. We're sitting on the corner. Okay, I'll stand, don't worry about it.
Slide them a little bit.
I can write it down on the rim.
Yeah.
Hi, Tom Holden.
There's another one here, I mean. Yeah, okay, you want to push down one?
Oh, one here?
I got one.
We're gonna have power, please, power.
I got it, chief. Sorry.
You look like Irish now. Green, mom.
So just, we already did a motion from table. So I look, I look at this one as very significant. When you have property owners that are purchasing their own yard signs. Excuse me? Yes, I welcome asking. So I just want to start by saying that I think it's significant, I had numerous conversations with the mayor, and Ms. Akins represents the mayor tonight, so why don't you, Ms. Mello, what do you say, your name and address?
Natalie Mello, five ten Northeastern Avenue.
Mr. Corey?
Thomas Corey, four seven seven Sherman Street.
Okay, why don't you, why don't you begin, Natalie?
All right, so I guess we have probably the same issues as Wilson Road. People have that long way, and people just fly. We, our neighbors, we're out in the yard last week, and there was people, actually you could see them, sixty-eight, fifty-seven. Tom, Officer Tom Faris has done an amazing job. He's been really good with us, he's educated us. You know, people don't want to get, they don't want to stop at forty-five, forty-seven, like, we all are guilty of that. We just want, all we ask is for signage, 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 because it may, it has happened, it has helped. The signs that we did put up has made a big difference.
What signs you talking about?
Forty means forty.
I know you sent me an email. All right, so.
So, and then when I, when I seen with-
It's not the lighted signs?
No.
Okay.
Oh, the other one you were talking about, what that woman, it's residential area, let me see, heavy, where is, I wrote it here somewhere. Okay, now I'm blind because I'm nervous. I wrote it here somewhere. Residential area, what was it, Laura, what's her name? Residential area, heavy.
Heavy residential area, slow down.
Okay, so I seen that at the top of Meridian Street when we go to breakfast after mass, and I'm like, oh my God, what a great idea. So I guess I called Laura, actually I talked to Linda and I talked to Laura, so we're in May now, so we finally got the signs that went up today, and they put them up. So when I seen that, I said, "It's perfect, not just for our area, other areas, I know New Boston Road gets crazy, there's other areas that really crazy, like Wilson Road, all those areas there, that is a big help." And then Mr. Toro, for two years now, he's been asking for help, and then some people, neighbors in that area feel intimidated, they feel like they're, people are going to retaliate against them, so they're afraid to come and talk. I don't want that. I don't want anybody older than me feeling that fear because their business is going to be interrupted by whoever. I don't want that. I don't, if I know that, that bothers me. I've worked with elders for all, most of my life, and I don't want to see them hurt nor feeling that way. Dave, my husband, we've had at least two accidents since I've been there next to New Boston Road, which I'm surprised. Counselor Andrew, I can't think of his name.
Repose.
Repose, it hasn't said anything because it's right out front of his house. And then we had another ax, another accident, somebody lost control and went into seven twenty Northeastern Avenue, into their backyard from the other side going north, crossed over to their property. Now what if somebody had a cookout that was out there? And those kids could have gotten killed. There's other people that own at least three properties in that area that they're afraid when their grandkids go out and play in the yard. You know what I'm saying? It's not right. And then we, back in January of twenty twenty-two, about three o'clock in the morning, our alarms were going off. And I'm like, oh my God, I wake up, Dave, well, you're not Dave. I wake up, Dave, I said, "Dave, Dave, the alarm, the alarms are going off."
Dave's not here.
Kind of like throw some human in there, you know? The alarms are going off, is somebody coming in? So he gets up, goes out, I'm like, okay, yeah, it's no problem, let's go, let's go check. So he went and checked. We looked out the window, there was, he went outside, and there was, I looked, I said, "It's outside." That car flipped over, it was a car flipped over. I send pictures to people. So he went out there, he says, "Well, thank God, I just renewed my CPR." Went out there, see what he could do, everything was fine, the police officers came, they're there, everything was handled, blah, blah, blah. Whatever reason it was that, I don't know what happened there. Then you've got the yellow buses, you've got the school buses, out of control, you've got the gas delivery bus, trucks. Once in a while, I actually called Stephanie to find out if they even can drive on Northeastern Avenue, but I guess they can. So they're, they're flying, Laura.
It's part of Route six, so unfortunately, they're-
Right, so now, yeah, so now they're flying, and then you've got some landscapers, and you've got the dirt bikes, which is another hole to do, you know? And that's, I mean, it's all, even the dirt, it's so unsafe. It's not, people don't want them to do stuff, it's unsafe for everybody, and so on. You know, and I feel bad for some people that are afraid to come and talk to the mayor or to Laura or to the counselors, it's not fair. And all we want is follow-ups on it. It's an easy fix, I put down. Tom Faris, he's been a great help, you know, he's ed, you know, now, you know, this one, you know, that, da, da, da. I mean, we've gotten all the help we can from you guys, we really have. It all comes down, I think, to signage. I know Mr. Toro there, I was saying his name wrong, he came up, he's traveled all over the world. He says, maybe not just, you know, maybe some higher signs, I don't know, I'm just saying this, maybe some higher signs where it's up in people's faces can bring a, I don't know, maybe somebody can come up with an idea, I don't know. Again, it's not just Northeastern Avenue, we just live there, we see it, we live it. So I think that's all I can think about, that's all I think I have. We just, we just want signage, a couple more forty signs, and we're coming from Northeastern Avenue, because there's two, but there's between, between, I get the address, between-
Well, the Rotary and-
Between Locust Street intersection and New Boston Road, that's the drag strip.
Right.
Mr. Kirk?
So I'd like to preface my comments by praising the chief and the mayor, because we've, we've made these points of view well-known in the past, and they've been very attentive, and a lot of movement has already begun to happen on behalf of the police department and the mayor's response. So it's, it's a well-known issue. Now, I've been there for forty-five years, I've seen more than two accidents. The wall at the corner of Locust and Eastern Avenue was, was put up by my late father-in-law because a lady did lose control on the avenue and actually ran their backyard and out, they had a fence at that time, and he declared, he said, "This will never happen to my property again," and then he put a brick wall up. So that, that sort of like set the table, but there's been some terrible, I mean, I'm sure the city has data on the terrible accidents that have ensued since that time on Northeastern Avenue because it's such a drag strip. There's, there's no lights or stop signs to deter motorists from their high speed. Now, there's been a lot of motions, there's a speed detector there now gathering data, and I think that could be very, very helpful. The signage here, at least it'll make maybe some people think twice. However, my biggest complaint is in the wee hours, if we're sitting, especially in the summertime, sitting in the backyard, you know, ten o'clock at night, eleven o'clock at night, midnight, there's that stray vehicle, it's not a whole traffic full of vehicles, it's just that stray vehicle, and they open up, and it's, it's absolutely amazing that they're not dead from some of the speed sounds I hear going on on that avenue. It's absolutely seriously-
They're blocked in.
Seriously dangerous. Some of the motorcycles or the motorbikes, you know, they rev really quickly and loudly, and, and they try to like go as fast as they can from, from Locust to New Boston Road, and that could be like midnight, one in the morning. I'm in bed sometimes, but I sleep with the window open, and I can hear it. Luckily, I don't get up, I just fall back asleep again, but, but it's just a note as to, even the sporadic speeding is extremely dangerous on that stretch of roadway, and I know it's Route six, it's a state roadway. We're a little bit limited, I guess, with what we can do, but I like the idea of signage. And signage is sort of like it's visible, it's there, it's in your face.
Well, to that point, I, over the last month or so, I've talked to Mayor Hogan, and maybe our city minister can elaborate, and I got an update this weekend during the Memorial Day ceremonies, and he said they were on order, they voted, so maybe, Mistake, do you want to elaborate?
I, can I grab the microphone?
Of course.
I don't really have much more to say other than that, that's, that's kind of where we are. I know we talked about this a few months ago, you know, more of the, the speed information gathering kiosk and that sort of thing. So in terms of all the measures that we can put into place statically, so the flashing signs, signs, that sort of thing, that's either in process or, or has happened. But, you know, I think we're always open to whatever needs to be done in order to get this problem under control, because it's crazy. I mean, everyone you talk to knows that it's absolutely crazy, and just given the way that, especially Northeastern Avenue sits, there's not a logical place for another stoplight, except for maybe just before the Rotary, but I think there's reasons not to do that. But it's, it's something we need to continue working on, but I think what we want to do is at least see how the next measures work out, if it has any measures- the next measures work out, if it has any measurable reduction. And then continue working from there, once we have a sense of that.
Do you have an idea of how many signs?
Hard to, so...
How many, how many have been ordered?
I don't know.
What signs are we talking about?
So, well, there's the, there's the flashing ones that we ordered with ARPA money.
That, that's...
That's you. And then there's also, I think you would put some, some other lit up signs in your capital improvement budget.
Right, that's from Chris, so Chris Hathaway has put up the, it doesn't monitor the speed, but as soon as you're going over forty, it will blink that you're going over forty. He is going to put up the other one sometime next week, so you've got two on each side. Maybe we can put more of those and I can speak to Chris about that.
You know where I would suggest to put that one, between the house before seven-twenty, there's a house there in that section.
Well, unfortunately I did put one up, but I was asked to move it.
That was at forty, no, that was right at the beginning.
Well, so Chris, Chris, he said he spoke to someone where he knows he's going to put it.
Yeah.
So that's for traffic that are heading south. Now, the other thing I can do, it won't go on Northeastern Avenue, but all the side streets that have stop signs, we can put the red solar flashing stop signs, which will alert people as they're getting to the intersection to be a little bit more careful with the traffic that's... That's something that we can do, if you feel it's going to help as well, we'll put up some more forty mile per hour signs.
That sounds good.
Yep, we'll put some more.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Do you feel that it's, it's sort of the drag strip aspect of it, that people on the straightaway? Or is it people entering onto Eastern Avenue from side streets?
Most of the time it's heading north.
Okay.
Because they can, they, they just can see that there's nobody in front of them.
Yeah.
So they open up. It's less so heading south, but it still occurs, it still happens. Especially at night when there's much less traffic on the road.
With the signs that are there right now, did either of you perceive any change when they were originally put up?
Yes.
Like, was there an initial effect of that?
Yes, I, I think there's been some improvement, I really do. I'm very grateful to the police for working with us and hearing us in the city, I'm extremely grateful for that, yes.
Mayor, just to that point. So we did have a speed trailer in the northbound lane and obviously the, the purpose of that was hoping to bring the, uh, compliance to a higher level, obviously in the eighty-five percent area, and, and we're right there right now. Uh, we're at the eighty-five percent of compliance area, that sounds great. But, at the same point, uh, just in the last thirty-two days, uh, we had a hundred and ninety-six thousand motorists go by that spot. That's a hundred and ninety-six thousand nine hundred and forty-six.
Thirty days?
Thirty-two days. Eighty-five, eighty-five percent traveled under, eighty-five percent traveled under forty-five miles an hour. So, we still have about seven hundred and seventy motorists that are traveling at a high rate of speed. Uh, so that's an issue for us that, you know, obviously we have to be a little bit more vigilant. Uh, but we also know that the bulk of that seven hundred and seventy number, um, is between five and six AM in the morning. Um, but that still leaves intermittent issues at night, so it tends to be when traffic is a little bit lighter. Um, so we still have some issues there and, you know, we'd like to see that percentage of compliance a little bit better.
Now, another speed trail was put up as well.
That's correct, we just, yep, that's correct, we just put a new speed trailer in the southbound lane.
And I have to say, chief, that one is great because we picked up on it, it's got the blue lights on it. And those signs that you ordered, that you put on the poles, that would be perfect on those signs because it brings attention. Cause a lot, like the one that is across the street from the outside, the sun hits it, so you can't see. So it's kind of in a bad section. You know, I'm just telling you that...
That's in the southbound lane right now?
Yes. That's the only one right now.
Yeah, Chris would be the one, cause he ordered those.
Cause I've been trying to...
The speed trailer we're talking about, correct?
No, 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 no. Those, um...
It's the new signs that, um, Chris has that, um, if flashes...
Yeah, the speed's marketing.
No, but the one that...
It's solar powered as well.
The speed one, the trailer there, I mean, I felt guilty because now there's one up ahead and there's one down below. I don't want to take, we don't want to take any speed trailers from anyone else, I mean, one is good, it's working. But once those speed trailers are gone, I can guarantee you, Mr. Toro can tell you, he sees it himself, you know? My heart goes out to him because he's been asking for help for a long time and some of the neighbors were saying they've been around for fifty-one years and no one's ever listened to them. Broke my heart, because it shouldn't be that way.
I love the question. So my question is, is given the fact that it's Route six, um, how much can we exert control, maybe our state legislators, uh, to, to maybe weigh in and try to work with us towards some type of an idea?
Yeah, I know in the past when we've called down to Department of Transportation, I think to Sector seven?
Uh, no, it's five, District five in Ton, District five in Ton. Carol Fiole has been really, uh, with Wilson Road, so maybe that's someone you can reach out to.
Yeah, and she's on top of things, trust me, she, she really is.
Oh yeah, so she's very receptive.
Yeah.
But we're not just going to jump from here, over, you know, the mayor said, Laura said.
Yeah, I was just asking a question, just trying to figure out, like, like, what's it look like, you know, beyond Fall River?
Okay.
Like Mr. Dino, I'm, I'm, I know I'm saying his name, Tino.
Yes.
Um, like he said, he's traveled all over the world, there's others that we've spoke to, maybe something above, some kind of flashing light warning them, I don't know. If there's something that people come up with, if there's something that can be done, maybe that would help.
Set up a lemonade stand, five cents a glass, where you'll stop.
No, it's five dollars though. You haven't seen the commercial?
So, you know, we've, we've seen ourselves looking at the speed trail down the street from us. We've seen it ourselves, sixty-eight, seventy, fifty-eight, fifty-seven, you know? And like I, I told this to Officer Tom Faris, some of our new cars, uh, sometimes I look down at my speed, how much I'm going, like, oh my God, you go fast. Some of these new cars, it, you seem, you seem, you know, kind of...
You don't feel the speed.
You don't. So...
Okay, well, um, I also want to echo your, your comments, I, I do give Mayor Coogan a lot of credit on this, cause he's been very responsive, responsive to my telephone calls. When I call him, it's amazing, I don't know how he does it.
Yeah.
Ninety, ninety-eight percent of the time he picks up the phone.
We've talked to him, so...
Yeah, so, um, he's well aware of it, signs are on order, that was your request.
Thank you.
Well, my suggestion is, unless councilors want to say anything, we keep this in the committee and revisit it during the summer.
That's fine. I want to thank the committee and I want to thank Laura and I want to thank the chief for their responsiveness and their reception.
Thanks, Ms. Corey.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Corey, you always approach things both very positively.
Just...
I said, you, you both always approach things in a very positive manner.
We try, it's the best way. And I want to thank you Laura for calling me and keeping me updated, I appreciate that.
Um, just give, cause I have to order the speed limit forty, cause we don't keep like a whole bunch, so we'll be, we'll be ordering and, you know, we'll position them some between, do you want to go from between Bedford to Locust and then Locust to New Boston Road? Or just from New Boston Road to Locust?
I think, I think they're both, you know, and, and there's a lot of violators on both ends.
That's right.
But mostly on the Locust to New Boston Road.
Okay.
Because that's a clean visual straightaway.
And that's heading north, right?
Yeah, heading north is, is the most dangerous aspect.
And then the stop sign ones, we'll wait, um, let's see, yeah, it won't, yeah, it's really not. So we'll wait, we just put the signs up today.
I see, yeah, I got calls.
Well, he called, they went and pick it up, so they said we'll just put it up, so...
This five, somebody counted five, this five sign.
No, there's six, three on each side, yeah. So let's see with that, between more forty, um, let's see if it'll hold.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Talk to you soon, sir.
Are you okay, mister, do you need to say something?
No, that's fine, that's alright.
We'll revisit this summer for sure.
Yeah, appreciate it very much, thank you.
Thank you, nice night.
Thank you again, everybody.
Then I would make a motion to table?
Motion to table.
Second.
Motion to table is made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so finally we have a resolution, that was, um, Linda Pur's resolution, thank you, Michelle. And, uh, it speaks to executive session, so we're going to have Mr. Hawiak, please come down. Mr. Hawiak, Attorney Hawiak, I'm sorry. And the reason I asked you down is to, uh, as this is a corporation counsel, to recite the purpose of why we're going into executive session and, um,
Yep.
So, I think, yeah, first you could please recite the, uh, the reasoning.
Well, before going into that, um, I reviewed the matter, I viewed the notice and I don't believe the notice is sufficient as written to give the public adequate notice of exactly why you're going into executive session. In short, to go into executive session, um, you indicated in the notice one of the exceptions of the open meeting law to go into executive session, which is to discuss deployment of security personnel or device, devices and/or strategies with respect thereto, which is a valid reason to go into executive session. That is just simply iterating the law. And then now, now you have to say with specific detail what it is that you wanted to discuss so the public knows what the purpose of the executive session is. You have to convene an executive session with corporation counsel and the police chief to establish a plan for motorized street bike safety measures. You may read that knowing the history of what you're talking about. One may read that and look at establish a plan for motorized street bike safety measures as simply measures to improve the safety of those riding a motorbike. Okay, we're going to ensure that they have helmets, uh, you know, safety gear, uh, streetlights, I mean, headlights. So, I believe if you go into executive session, uh, the notice itself is inadequate, even though you may go into executive session and discuss those strategies which you're intending to discuss, um, that component might be okay, but the fact that the notice is deficient would be technically a violation of the open meeting law and I would recommend for this juncture, not going into executive session. All you would have to do is just re-notice with verbiage that I can assist the clerk with establishing, um, if that's your intent to go in future.
I know you have a question, but why wasn't this done before?
I have no idea. Uh, all I know is...
It's real specific, we, we scheduled this meeting last week and what we're going to discuss is very specific, so that language should have been done already, cause it's, this is an important issue, this one. But I'm, I, I respect you and I, obviously, and, uh, but, um, this discussion has to be made sooner than later and, um, so the alternative is to not to go in executive session and have a discussion?
That's, and it's an alternative, you can discuss publicly those matters that can be discussed openly and publicly.
But the resolution, it says executive session, so...
You, you, listen, uh, you technically could still go into executive session with the risk that notice was not sufficient. You know?
So it'd be an open meeting law complaint and you would defend it and, and of course you would argue that, well, you already said it's not, so...
He's not defending us.
There goes the challenge.
He's not defending us.
Déjà vu, well, yes.
So if, if that were more specific to public safety versus safety of the bikes, it still wouldn't matter?
No, no, I mean, you're here for a purpose, as I understand it, because individuals riding these ATVs or street bikes, motorized vehicles are to a degree violating the laws without consequence, going through stop signs, going through streetlights, doing wheelies, doing a lot of illegal activity. And I believe your goal is to figure out how to curb, cure, defend that, um, issue. So that's what should really be in the notice. That specifies exactly what we're talking about and what your goal is.
So the best thing to do at this point would be to table it, get the correct verbiage, give the correct notice and move on from there.
And be safe and sorry and...
That would be your recommendation.
It would be.
Okay, so...
Then I would make that motion.
Okay, I want to apologize to the public a little bit, if people are watching this meeting, because, um, this is a significant, significant issue. A police officer was struck. Um, and like I said the last meeting, when, sometimes I look at the fish, I've gotten a ton of calls, ton of calls. Maybe I get one or two, but I've gotten a lot of calls on this, a lot of calls. So, it's my job to, uh, to have a meeting sooner than later and I will have it right after the budget hearing, if it's okay with you guys.
Chairman Kilby, if, if I iterated the, or stated the, the issue correctly, I will then work with the clerk to make sure that it's properly addressed in the next...
Very good. So does a motion to...
Motion to table?
Second, motion to table made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
That, uh, that's it for the meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
I hope we've got a lot accomplished here, so... Motion to adjourn, made in second, good night.